Welcome back to Make It Public. I'm Ashley Button Shown and today I have council member Tyler Bird with me. How are you doing today Tyler?
So far, so good.
You're good? So you're running for reelection?
Yep.
Yep. So you know, how is the election going? We're almost done. How do you feel?
It's tiring.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to know how to feel about it. We don't do any kind of polling at this kind of level. And so you really have no idea where things are heading or how they're going to turn out until yeah, until the votes are all in. So even when we first start counting the Tuesday night, right? I mean, those results never hold. They always change and the day is coming through. So yeah.
Yeah. So you know, a lot's been happening in Waukesha County while you've been a council member. Um, you've never been in the majority. You've always been in the minority. So how
Trying to make me depressed, aren't you?
No, I just want to, I want to talk about, so some of our listeners may have heard you on KGMI with me and heard, you know, some about your opponent, but I, I want to point out that what's currently happening isn't necessarily what you're part of. I mean, you're part of some of it, but people are like, well, why would I vote for Tyler? Why would I really like Tyler? Well, that's Tyler hasn't been able to do much that he wants to do, right? So I want to kind of talk about what if we are able to flip this county with some other leaders, what are some things that you would want to do? And what are some things that you'd want to change? And maybe let's start with what particularly, you know, is for, for your district because you have a very large district. And there are some specific needs out there.
Yeah, there are a lot of needs out there. But there's also some major issues that affect all of us that I think that should really be priorities of ours that we should be fixing right now and that we're really, we're not. And I think the big reason for that in a lot of those cases is because the groups that they would affect are groups that support the majority and, and stop it from happening because that reason, right? So for example, you know, the Democrats sent out this card here with the ballots and it has a list of all these votes on emergency services and first responders where it shows media is voting no. And they're trying to say that I vote no against our sheriffs and our police officers and our firefighters and paramedics. But they don't really give any context to that other than the label, right?
Right.
So the, a number of times this bill has come forward asking us to approve schooling and or funding for paramedic school. And this is an interesting one to me and one that I think is kind of a key issue for us. In Waukesha County, we're spending over 200,000. It's closer to like 220 something thousand dollars per firefighter to put them through paramedic schooling. We are the only county in the state where that paramedic school is hosted and facilitated by the firefighters' union 106 in Bellingham. The next closest to us as far as cost goes is another county. I can't remember off the top of my head what it is, but they were roughly $20,000.
That's a huge difference.
It's a huge difference. And they go through like all the other counties, either their local community college or the technical college in their area. And that's who puts on the program. And these other counties that we looked at, they pulled the list just as a comparable for several of them, right? I think the cheapest one was closer to like nine or $10,000, but
And we're spending how much again?
Over 220,000.
Okay.
Per, right? And we, we put a couple through every year. And every year it grows more and more. So the, in those counties, some are smaller and some are bigger. But somehow the firefighters' union in Waukesha County is controlling this. And in Think 106, it's the size, that's the big sign you see on the freeways. You're driving through Bellingham. It always has your berries and Todd's campaign signs on it, right?
Right.
The they're arguing that somehow Waukesha County is so unique in what we do that we can't hire paramedics from other jurisdictions who have gone through these other schools because somehow they just can't meet our standards. And so we need to train them ourselves and put them through this, this $200,000 program. So we don't even like, we turn down paramedics that come to us asking for a job that have been certified and gone through a program at one of these other schools.
And the point should be made that we have now fired some of them.
Yeah. Okay. Let's talk about that. And in that contract that we signed, they say, hey, you know, we're going to ask them to commit to us for four or five years that they're going to stay on and so that we can get that investment back. Because of this, I actually ended up asking that question and saying, okay, well, how's that going to affect you? If they've committed to us four or five years, now we're going to let them go within a year or two because after this program, because of the mandate, does the contract require them to pay us back? And what they told me finally was like, no, that's actually not written into the contract. There's nothing in the employment agreement that actually forces them to stay with us for that period of time. This is kind of a verbal handshake, kind of friendly agreement thing. So we could spend $220,000 to train a new paramedic only to wash or walk, watch them walk out, you know, six months later and go get a job somewhere else.
Right. So, and then we've got to train more if we can even find them now because of mandates. So they're probably going to ask for more money, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. A hundred percent. And you wonder like this money right now is coming out of the EMS budget that was approved, that tax years ago.
Yeah.
And they're getting ready to come back. I think their plan right now is to bring it back next year and put it on the ballot. That was all supposed to be done. We were supposed to be done hiring and training and staffing a paramedic position. I think it was last year. We're still not done and it's because like we're requiring everyone to go through this special training program. It makes absolutely no sense and it's incredibly frustrating. The reason I don't have the data or exactly which counties we looked at and what the costs were is they showed it to us at their board meeting or EMS board meeting. I want to say it was last February, maybe March. I went back to find the, the video and the meeting minutes and it's the only video and meeting minutes that's not listed on the site that they didn't email out to us that we never approved. It didn't come up at the next meeting for approval. There's no record of what actually took place in that meeting. And I asked them, can you send over that list? And they've never sent the list over either. And so it's a little frustrating because it's like, here's the data.
Yeah.
They know it's there. They don't like it. And so now all of a sudden it's not recorded and they're going to, it's frustrating. So I think we have to address that. Similarly, the, we're one, we're the only county I'm aware of anymore in Washington state that actually has two separate 911 centers. In the past, multiple counties like King County and others had that, but they've all consolidated down into a single 911 center. And you know, what was it? Snohomish County, I think, did it two or three years ago, a couple of years back. It cost them just over a million dollars to do. And somehow we're saying, hey, if we did this, it's going to cost us at least four or five million dollars, if not more to do it. And oh, by the way, we can't do it because the jobs between the firefighting dispatch center and the police dispatch center are so different that a person couldn't learn both jobs and do it efficiently. And yet they're able to do that in all of the other counties and in counties like King County, which is substantially larger than us and more complex. So why, why can't we do it? It doesn't make sense. And ultimately the sheriffs and the police side, they all are in favor of it. They would like to see it done, but the firefighters' union will not allow it to happen.
Okay. Yeah. So there's one, there's one big thing.
Yeah. I mean, imagine that. Most people don't experience this and so they're, they're not aware of it, but let's say my wife is having a heart attack. I call 911 looking for help and it's a matter of like, sorry, we can't help you. Would you please hold? Why I transfer you to the other 911 center that handles medical.
Right. Right.
I would be freaking out. That doesn't even make any sense.
Well, and again, compiling problems and then we are losing personnel on top of it. So, and this kind of, and then it comes full circle. Like who's going to pay for it? Right?
Yeah.
Who's going to pay for it? We're going to pay for it.
Yep.
County is going to pay for it. And so because they have, they have done what they have done as a majority, more, more taxes.
Every year.
Everything is going up. Everything's going up right now.
Yep.
Gas prices. I mean, cost of food, cost of insurance, cost of everything is going up. The last thing we need is increase in taxes, even though we just, I mean, we had one. It was small. But those who live in Bellingham decided that the whole entire county needed to have an increase in taxes.
Are you referring to the affordable housing? Yeah. Sales tax?
Yes.
Yeah. Again, like they're going to pass that so they can say that they've done something to help affordable housing. And yet there's absolutely, there's no plan. There's zero plan for how to spend that money or how to utilize it so that we can create more affordable housing. They're going to collect it with the hope of doing something with it to offset the cost of housing. The, I don't know how you can possibly do that if you don't have a plan for how to use the money. But the, it's just, it's mind numbing to me, the craziness that we constantly are running through here.
Right. And, and they're, they're kind of bending the rules throughout stuff. So there, there's a video of you, I think it's two, is it two years ago? Where they were, you know, basically trying to pass something hush, hush. And Barbara Brunner is like, wait a minute, what's going on here? And she's trying to make a motion and it was, was it Todd? And I don't remember who was, who was trying?
I think you're thinking about three years ago at Cherry Point.
Yes. Yes. Yeah. And, and they were kind of, you know, it was like a behind the scenes scheme. And then they just tried to ram it through and you were like, wait a minute, this, and this is what happens here.
Yeah.
And, and so maybe you can elaborate a little bit for listeners, kind of.
Yeah, it was the Cherry Point ordinances that the moratorium was in place so that the county could work on and implement all this additional regulations on the industries out there at Cherry Point. And so that was going on for years, three years, four years up to that point in time. And the council had finally gotten it back that year, earlier in the year. Legal, third party legal law firm had reviewed it, brought it back to us, given us updates. We'd taken the document and we were looking at their recommendations and working through it. And that was the same year that we were going into budgeting for the two-year biennial budget. And so we put it on hold in, I want to say October, so that we could finalize the budget. It came back at our first meeting in January. And what had happened is that during that time, Todd Donovan had gotten together with a couple of Alex Rommel from Stand Out Earth. And they had updated that, that ordinance and all the laws in it. And then they had sent it out like the day before Christmas Eve. So we're on this winter break. The, it's right there with Christmas. Your family's in town. You're celebrating Christmas. Positions are changing over when new elected officials coming in, all of that. So it's intentional that they're sending it out when they know people aren't going to be watching and paying attention and to what, you know, so it comes back. It ends up in our docket, in our binder to be voted on. And in that binder, there's no like mention, usually when an ordinance comes forward, it says, who sponsored it? Like who is it coming from? And then if you're revising a document, we always do track changes. So you can see what was crossed out and what was added in. This document didn't identify that it was a revised version. It didn't identify that it came from Todd or anyone else. And it didn't show any changes at all that were tracked. So if you were just looking at our binder,
You think it's a whole new thing?
You think it's the same thing that we left in October.
Oh, okay.
Right? And so then it comes out that like, no, this is an entirely different document. And oh, we can't tell you what we changed because we didn't track the changes. And we don't have any way to show you what was changed other than going through and line item, looking at it. And my only ask was like, hey, this is crazy. We need to know what we're voting on. There's no rush here. I mean, it's been four years. You're not getting it done tonight. So let's put it on hold and not vote on this and actually work through it and see what changed. And Todd and the council completely refused. They voted it through and forced a vote on it and forced approval of that document that night.
Did Barbara vote for that? Do you remember?
I don't remember. I don't believe that she did. I'm almost 99.9% certain that she didn't. Yeah.
Yeah. She was trying to change stuff and they were like, they're kind of making fun of her. I mean, they're, what are you trying to do, Barbara? Like, you know, what, and, and it scares me that they, they do stuff like that. And I know Todd's notorious for doing stuff like this. And then when you bring it to people's attention, he throws a fit.
Not only does he throw a fit, but I mean, he starts labeling you and just blatantly lying and calling it out through all of his different friends and the different media outlets like Cascadia, which is, that's not a newspaper. It's not even a community newspaper. It's, it's a tabloid. Right? The, they'll write whatever Todd wants them to write. And so they, they frame it and that's, but the issue is that that's what a lot of the people in our community read. And that's where they get their information. They're not watching the council meetings and they're certainly not reading the ordinance itself. They're just reading that article that is totally fictitious. And so that's, that's a whole nother topic though.
Yeah. Cause it's a story that he paints.
Yeah.
And, but, but so I just want to point out that your ability to call them out for stuff that they shouldn't do, I appreciate it. And I mean, like, I can't vote for you, but if I was someone who was thinking about voting for you, I'd be like, well, Tyler's keeping them accountable. Because also in the last meeting, there is, there's open session where people can talk and you had someone in the community tell you, hey, take a look at the rules book, right?
Yeah.
And so you've been spending time going over the rules and you wanted to ask a question of someone in open session who had just spoke. And what happened?
Yeah. I mean, this has been going on since day one. My opinion is we get elected, we're supposed to listen to the community and the public. And when they say something, we have a duty to like ask questions and understand what it is that they're trying to communicate to us and to listen to them, right? And if they ask us a question, we should respond to them. We should engage, right? We shouldn't be sitting there for three minutes and letting them talk to us while we don't pay attention and not saying anything to them. I mean, not only is that rude, but I think it goes against everything that people expect from their elected officials. So in the last, you know, ever since I've been elected, I've tried to do that. And they have voted to shut it down and to stop it on numerous occasions. They're very much against debate or conversation there. And so finally, you know, I got this rulebook and we have a what's the word? Our clerk is essentially a parliamentarian.
Okay.
And so she tells us kind of what the rules are and like if we're bending them or breaking them.
Dana, right?
Dana, yeah. Dana's fantastic.
Yeah. I see, I see Barry will often refer to Dana. Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you help?
So, but there's a way that they've done things for years now, right? And it's not by the book. And so the book that we're supposed to follow, it's not Robert's Rules of Order. It's another version. But it's actually written into the code that those are the rules that we have to follow unless the code overrides that. And in that book, it says like the same thing that I've always thought like, hey, we have a right to ask questions and an obligation to ask questions too. And so you're right. I got that copy finally and read it and found that in there. And I used that to actually ask questions. And even then though, I mean, the book was very specific. I have a right to ask a question. I have to ask the, I can't interrupt the speaker. This is really important. I have to ask the chair. He has to, unless it's for some reason I'm breaking the rules, he has to allow me to do it. It doesn't require a second, so I don't need someone else to agree with me. And it's not debatable. You can't argue my right to ask a question. It's my right as a board member or a council member. And yeah, at this one, Barry didn't actually assert the rights. He didn't follow the rules. What he did is he let Todd basically butt in twice without being called on and talk over everyone else and say what he wanted to say to debate the rule to try to stop me and shut me down.
Right. Cause Todd's arguing, this is not how we do things.
Yeah.
And you know, I would say, well, it seems the way you do things is to let Todd bully everyone into getting what he wants.
I mean, so like, so let me understand this real quick. Like the way you do things is against the law because our law says we have to follow that book.
Right.
And if you're doing things that are against the book, then you're breaking the law. So Todd, you're okay basically breaking the law and bending the rules whenever it suits you. But if I want to actually use the law and follow the law, then that's not allowed and I'm the bad guy.
Right. And, and they kept trying to force you to like make a motion, but you don't have to make a motion.
Don't have to make a motion.
You don't need a second.
Nope.
Because they want to shut you up so that you don't have conversation with constituents.
Yeah.
That is a huge red flag for elected officials. If they don't want to hear from the people who elected them, we shouldn't vote for them.
I totally agree with you. A hundred percent agree with you.
Both of them are up for reelection.
Imagine that.
Yeah.
The, and hopefully they both lose, lose their seats. You know, that, that's one reason I think that they should lose their seats, but honestly, I mean, I, there's dozens of other reasons. When you think about, this one really just irks me. At the beginning of COVID, we took a vote based on the governor's orders to go home and do remote meetings, right? Through Zoom. Great.
To be safe, because we didn't know.
Yeah, exactly. So, and I agreed with that. I voted in favor of that. A hundred percent supported it. But then I asked and said, hey, you know, we're only here one day a week. We're usually in committee meetings during that time and council meetings. So we're not really interacting a ton with the public one-on-one. But our staff are here 40 hours a week, Monday through Friday, eight to five, right? And they are handling staff or community requests every day, all day. So I made a motion that, hey, we should vote and have them work remote too. They shouldn't be staying there. If it's not safe for us, it's not safe for them.
Right. It's not safe for you one day.
Right?
Yeah.
And yet that same council that said, hey, we're going to go home because it's not safe for us, refused to allow our staff to go home. And they voted to make the staff stay in the office and continue working at the same time.
So they had to work while, yeah.
But I mean, in reality, how's that any different than today? You know, your grocery store workers are back, your teachers are back, our kids are back. Everyone's back to work except for the council.
Except for the council.
For the cabal, right? They, they will not vote to allow us to go back in person.
Right. And I just want to point out, and I've been trying to point this out because I think it's important that people follow this and not everyone wants to sit and listen and watch the council meetings on Zoom because it's a long day. And
Yeah. 16, 17 hours at least.
Yeah, I'm weird. I like to watch those. I like to watch ballot. I like to be in a ballot observer. I just like that stuff. But um, I think it's important for people to realize, you know, people have been coming and pleading, please open up for those of us who want to come. Please open up. We want to come back. And it was first, well, can't do it because we have, you know, have to have options for people who have, want to be on Zoom. And so great. Now we find out we can do hybrid model. And so we've got you and Kathy and Ben were like, okay, welcome. You stay at home. And they're like, because their concern is we don't want to be around people who aren't vaccinated or who will not wear a mask. And again, you point out, well, Todd, some people can't wear one. There's an RCW that states we are not to enforce if they can't wear one because of medical reasons. And, and so they didn't give people a chance though, to even come and wear a mask. Cause I've talked to a lot of people who, who don't, don't wear one anywhere. But in order to come to the chambers, they will put one on.
Yeah.
Because they want to be heard. And it's, it's, you know, what you have to do to have your voice heard. But we shouldn't have to go through these measures to have our voice heard. And so here we've got people who say, well, I can't meet a room with someone who's not vaccinated, even though you're like, how many feet away? In a plastic bubble. I mean, I don't care what you have to be in or stay at home and be on Zoom. But we got Todd, who I can't do that, but gets on a plane and goes to DC. I mean, seriously.
I mean, yeah, just after he got off a plane from going to Germany, what, like last month? He's flying all over the place, going everywhere. Totally comfortable with all that, but he's not comfortable setting what 15, 20 feet away on a dais and listening to the community.
Right. Yeah. So I think, you know, in an airtight capsule, if he can be in, I guarantee some unvaccinated people with their mask down when they eat their peanuts, I'm pretty sure he could come hear us.
He absolutely can.
So I just think people should think about that. And you know, we have Nurse Nancy running as a write-in. You have to write her in. But this is a vote, I mean, like if you're, you don't know about Nancy maybe, but it's a vote against Todd. We don't want any more of Todd.
Yeah.
Todd is dangerous. Anybody but Todd. Yeah. I mean, and, and unfortunately, you know, Kelly O'Connor had dropped out for personal reasons. But um, because she was another great candidate. And I, but I think it's important people just don't vote for Todd because he's toxic. He is toxic for our community. And Barry, he's been there since what? 1989 and elected official? What has he done for us? I mean, he's a nice guy sometimes.
He's voted with the majority.
Right. More status quo. So that leads me into your opponent. More status quo. More, more of the same, right? So I guess if you're happy with where our community and our county has gone and where it's headed. And I don't know many people who are, when I actually talk to people, business owners, left, right? I've been talking to people who are like, I'm a liberal and I hate this. And so I want to know, you know, what are we going to get if we end up with your opponent?
I mean, you're going to get more of what we have, obviously, right? The, I question like, who actually is looking at Bellingham and Waukesha County and what's happening here and likes it? I mean, who looked at the, the 210 homeless encampment in front of city hall? And liked that and thought that was a good thing? Or, or the, this group of Antifa members that broke the door and ripped down the American flag and burned it on city hall and then hey, forced the mayor of Bellingham to flee out the back door with the police for his safety, right? I mean, is that beneficial to us?
Well, now we have shanty city with all these, these motor homes. I don't even know where people are getting these. But there's, there's tons of them out there. And we're just turning into mini Seattle. I mean, we are, we are, we're mini Seattle now. And, and now we are getting rid of our police force.
Here's the crazy thing to me. Instead of looking at the fact that, hey, we've had democratic control at the city, the council, the mayor, the executive, the county council, Olympia, the governor's position, pretty much every elected position we have in Washington state, right? For years now, and things aren't getting better. They're, they're getting worse. Instead of looking at them thinking like, hey, I think maybe we should try something different and go the opposite direction. We're doubling down and saying, well, let's just go more extreme. Let's just pass more laws and make it more extreme and more difficult because somehow that'll make it better. Nope, it won't.
Well, and it's like, it's not even necessarily like Democrat agenda. It's progressive, crazy agenda.
Far left.
Far left.
Yep.
And, and so I, yeah, people, I mean, people that I know from the East Coast look at this here and they're like, yeah, those people aren't Democrats. Like that's not a Democrat.
Yeah.
And, and I think that's where people are finding themselves saying, hey, I've been a Democrat and I've been voting for what the Democrat party recommends. And elections have consequences.
They do. They do.
Yeah. And I, and I would say that the Democrat party is going down a very dangerous path. For their, even their city recommendations, because you have like Christine and Michelle. She is openly a racist.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not, I, there's no other way to put it. It's sad. And I don't know if it's, or it's, it's her social media persona. But it is on her Instagram. She is not hiding it and we should be calling it out for what it is.
You put someone like that into elected position, they're going to be just like Todd, right? I mean, who's going to feel comfortable coming in front and testifying or giving their opinion to her when they know that they're going to get ripped apart? She's going to do what Todd does. The minute the council meeting's over, he goes on Facebook and calls that person out, labels them with a half a dozen things that don't even apply.
And he hides it because he's about a private account.
Yeah. They shares it with all of his friends and news outlets and everything else. It just tears people up. Like that's not leadership.
It's not. It's not leadership. And I guess that's kind of my point is we've got failed leadership after failed leadership from Barry 1989 to Barry 2021. And I, I just want to know, well, what are you going to do? And you know, we've invited them all to come talk to us. They don't even respond. They won't. I mean, your, your opponent responded to me for the radio and said that she was too busy. So I'll give her the credit that she at least responded. But I, you know, we kind of talked about on the radio and for people who didn't hear, she thinks that this, the county should only contract with certain groups, with unions.
Yeah. We should only allow unions to bid on our RFPs and our contracts essentially.
Yeah. So for someone who's like, what the heck is that? Explain a little.
The, is what our contracts are or?
Well, just like, what would that mean? I mean,
When you think about it, I think, what is our county like 85, 90% of the businesses in our county are, are open shops.
Right.
So they're not union based. The, so that would basically say all of them, regardless of whether it's printing or it's printer leases or it's purchasing equipment such as vehicles, the, it doesn't matter. We could only contract and put those orders, that business through a labor company or a union, yeah, a union shop. So, and you wonder why, I mean, it's the same thing. Think about the people that are supporting her. All unions or a vast majority, it's unions. Obviously because they're going to get their money back on the contracts. The, or it's the firefighters' union. Because they want to keep their money, the paramedics and the 911 centers and the other stuff that they're pulling. It's the Democrats and the Democrat party. The, and it's the teachers' unions, right? I mean, they're very special interest groups that are trying to maintain control and they know that they're going to get that from her.
Right. And if we allow that at a local level, because we see it at a national level, we see who's controlling everything nationally. We allow that here at a local level, we're just right down the tube. I mean, and, and like you said, from printing to, I mean, because people probably think, oh, well, it's probably just like roadwork or you know what I mean? People think, you know, oh, it's probably all these big jobs. No, it's literally everything. It's everything.
That's what she said?
Yeah. Yeah. And so, so she comes from an education background, right? Um, not a lot of people are happy with what's going on in schools right now.
Well, I'm not. I got, yeah, 11 and 13 year old and I'm ticked. I mean, I hate it. It drives me nuts.
Right. And, and, but I don't hear from her that she wants to change
No.
what's going on in schools. I mean, it seems like it's more of the same. And if you're bought and paid for by unions and if you have teachers' unions pulling your strings, I, I mean, I don't want that.
I don't either.
Yeah. And I wouldn't think, because you have a very, your rural, rural communities out there, I'm hearing from them, especially at Baker. Baker is really bad right now. And, and so I don't think she's going to bring to Baker what the people of Baker want. So I mean, what would, what would you say to the people out there who are worried about that path that our public school system is going on? And especially kind of with the, the family rescue plan or American Rescue Plan or whatever they call it. And with all that money coming in, I mean, what are they going to allow Sat Pol to do with that money all in the name of education?
Yeah. Yeah. That's a great question. The, the reason money doesn't go from the 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 reason money doesn't go from the county to the rest of the rural county and other jurisdictions is the vast majority of it is spent inside of Bellingham. And you look at the ARPA funds, I mean, it's what eighty percent of it's bucketed for Bellingham? It's an absurd amount. The uh, and the stuff that's not, isn't beneficial to the county per se. The it's stuff like water quality projects or or restoration projects, right? The or in some cases, it's infrastructure projects for like the city of Blaine. The uh, which this is driving me nuts. They get their own ARPA dollars. They have their own tax revenue. They can tap into the Economic Development Fund, which they never use, which is set there for this type of project they want to do. And yet they're coming to us and saying, hey, we want you to put up three and a half million dollars, I think it is, of ARPA funds. It might be two and a half, but I think it's three and a half million of your ARPA funds from the county for our project, and we're gonna put in half a million of ours. That's insane. They we should be spending that money in other areas of the county that do not have another government jurisdiction like a city to support them and help them do those same kind of projects.
Right.
The city's there in Blaine, they can do that, right? So when you actually get down to like, what is it that we're going to do for the actual county people that don't live in Bellingham or or Blaine? They it's very little, very little. But again, it's controlled by four people that live in Bellingham and represent Bellingham voters. So it makes sense. And when you look at my opponent right now, you think about like, well, she lives in the county. Is she really gonna be the same as them? And the argument I would have is like, look at where her money's coming from, one. It's, you know, if the little bit that's coming from Waukam County is coming from those people that live in Bellingham or the unions and the Democratic Party in Bellingham. It there's a substantial, over half of it, from what I can tell, is coming from Olympia or out of state. The uh, which is crazy in itself. But all of her events too, like her fundraising events, the things that she's doing, I mean, she's in Bellingham. She's doing those things in Bellingham. She's getting her money from Bellingham. Is she really gonna represent people in the county? And if she cares so much about the people in the county and the problems that we're struggling with, where has she been the last forty years of her life? I mean, why hasn't she been a part of any of these other groups or nonprofits or committees or boards helping serve the community up until now? You would think that she would have been a part of all of that. I mean, she hasn't even showed up to a council meeting to speak on a topic. And yet she's saying that she's gonna be the voice of this community and she's gonna fight for them. And yet she's never said a single word about it to us.
Right, and some of the concerns out there are, um, you know, having internet out there, having grocery stores.
I love that one, though. Think about this. She bought a house years ago that she knew didn't have internet. Now she's unhappy that she doesn't have internet and she wants taxpayers to pay to now bring her high speed internet. Yeah, the it's actually a very small percentage of our county that doesn't have high speed internet.
But but that's another reason why we should open the chambers is because not everybody can get on Zoom calls.
Yeah, hundred percent.
Yeah.
You're a hundred percent right.
So um, the whole grocery store thing, you know, people have to drive, I mean, how, there's some people have to drive like, what, forty five minutes?
It takes me an hour to get from my house, just over an hour, to get from my house to the community events out in like Columbia Valley and Kendall.
Okay. So what would be something that, because I've asked, I've asked some people and they're like, well, we need grocery stores out here. What what can the council do?
Well, I mean, that one's tough because it's kind of regulated by the Growth Management Act that restricts the size, right? And so what we have to do is we have to start actually working on the code and looking at how do we either push back on the Growth Management Act or how do we find areas that we can expand and and leverage, right, to kind of get around it? At the end of the day, the, yeah, I mean, that it's a tough one. The the other option is like, how do we support those communities like Columbia Valley and Kendall? Which very well, I mean, they could be their own cities and then that would change everything, right? And then they could build, they set their own like business zoning and everything else. In order for them to be able to do that, the one of the the criteria is they need a community, like a visit welcome center. And we've spent millions of dollars building the East Waukam Regional Resource Center out there for them. And that very much could be that welcome center. But the issue is that the council has contracted, the county has contracted Opportunity Council to run that. And Opportunity Council won't let these community groups come in and use it. And if they do, they want to charge them. So the the community out there is really upset about this. They, hey, we have Alcoholics Anonymous that needs a place to meet. It's a nonprofit.
Especially right now.
This used taxpayer dollars to build this facility for us. Why can't we use it for free to help people who are struggling to to get, you know,
Right.
back, the uh, and right their lives and stay in it, and they can't. It it's the same for Drugs Anonymous.
Yeah.
Yeah, because Opportunity Council wants to charge these nonprofit groups that don't have the revenue for it. And so they're having to find other places to meet or other ways to do it.
And that's because opportunity.
They didn't let the Girl Scouts meet there. How absurd is this? The Girl Scouts can't meet there.
So but the council has put the Opportunity Council in charge of, like, they've contracted them?
Like a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year to to run it.
So you can take that away?
Oh, we absolutely could take it away. I mean, we could take control of it away. We could run it ourselves. And, you know, their community actually passed a couple of years ago and created their own Parks District with an elected board. So we could actually turn that facility over to them and give them the hundred and forty thousand dollars. Their community runs it for them, right? Their own Parks District runs it. And that precedent we have in place, because we do the same thing out in Birch Bay with some county owned park or property.
So why haven't you? Is it because of the majority you have?
I actually, we were out there at a town hall. Uh, it was me, Barry and Carol, and the community brought it up. And I I said the same thing. I was like, hey, you guys know where I stand on this. You know, you have three votes. You need one more. Like Barry, Carol, will either one of you agree right now to be the fourth vote and allow that to happen? And they both like, well, uh, no, nothing. So they said, okay, well, how about this? How about we do another meeting? Because instead of listening to the elected officials here tell you all these great things that they're gonna do and then never do them, how about we actually do a follow up meeting where we have to come back and be accountable for what we said last time?
Yeah.
Community loved it. So they scheduled a follow up meeting we did a couple of weeks ago. Surprise, surprise, Barry and Carol didn't show up. Like, no show, sorry, can't come. It drives me nuts.
So no, no representation from your at large candidates out there?
Nope.
Yeah, or or members. One's a candidate, one's a council member. Um, so I I guess then, I mean, the Growth Management Act. Uh, can you, with a majority that changes, would you be able to change those those codes and stuff? Or I mean, do you do you want to? Is that, I mean, it's kind of a touchy area, right?
It's a super touchy one. And that would be one of the most difficult issues that we would have to struggle with. And I don't honestly know how much we could do there because it's such a touchy issue. Not to say we wouldn't work on it, but there's also just a whole bunch of other things that are a lot easier that we could do and do a lot faster, right?
Right.
So here's another thing that I think that we should do right away. We need to hire a third party agency that specializes in building and zoning codes.
Okay.
And they need to come into Waukam County and streamline our billing code. Not have our planning department mingling in there and deciding what things go and where they go. Not having, you know, these other community groups and resources and everyone else do it. Have another agency come in, streamline it and bring it back to us and present to us all the changes. And they can look at all the other counties and jurisdictions in the state that all fall under the same GMA and same state raws, right? So they could actually bring something back that's workable and would save a ton of time and just make things a lot faster and and more common sense. But yeah, but again, we'd have to have a fourth vote.
Right, and I mean, how's your representation on your committees for people out in your district? Do you need more?
Are you talking about like the council advisory committees?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, we can always use more. We have so many committees that have standing vacancies constantly that we're always looking for more. I mean, the big key ones, like the Planning Commission, uh, I mean, they're pretty good at stacking those and making sure as soon as someone's coming up, they know about it. And they have two or three other people they want to slot, so that's hard.
Right.
But that would be another place that
Because in the council votes.
Pretty quick change.
And allows or doesn't allow people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and oftentimes they're stacking these committees with people that have their beliefs. And then using that when it comes back to say, well, this is what the community advised. This is what we should do. And it's like, well, no, that's what, you know, these couple of people that are inside your little political powerhouse. The uh, that you placed there for that reason have decided, but it's not a general community consensus by any means.
Right, so um, we've, I wondered, you, since you're kind of trying to hold the council accountable to some rules and stuff. Have you ever wanted to be the chair?
Oh, the um, I haven't tried to be the chair of the council yet. The uh, I up until this year, I have chaired committees. So the first couple of years, I chaired the Planning and Development Committee. Uh, and then last year I chaired Finance, and I chaired Finance because I have by far the the most finance experience out of anyone on the council. Significantly more than than anyone else there. So it makes a lot of sense from that standpoint.
And your opponent does not have that.
No, I mean, she has government finance experience, if you want to call it that, right? The uh, the last two years, she's been the president of the teachers' union down there, and so she's had to do a teacher's budget. The uh, I think that's very different than a business finance and actual true finance and economics. The and I think you see that in the way government spends money versus the way businesses spend money, right? But as of now, I'm actually not on any of those because they they booted me off of them all this year, so.
How are they able to do that?
Well, they have the majority, right? So they get to decide what committees that you get to serve on. And then they stacked each of the committees so that the me, Ben and Kathy, it weren't, there was not two of us on any one of those committees. So that we wouldn't make up the majority on any committee. And then that way they retain their majority, not just of the council, but also in each committee when the committees elected the chairs.
So again, so important to vote for other people because they are running amok with no rules. And essentially breaking the law by breaking the rules, doing whatever they want, keeping you silent. Don't want you talking to people, don't want you asking questions. They don't, I mean, and now we wonder why we're in this situation where we can't go in the chambers. We can't, you know, I mean, it's only getting worse, but we now have all these rules against us. And, you know, if we're in the middle of a pandemic, why, I just want to know, why are we firing firefighters and paramedics and police officers and nurses and doctors? And why are we firing all these people who were heroes? Why are we doing it? Teachers and all these people, why are we doing this? And and we have a council um, majority that supports the division in in our county. And and I know you do not, you know, you're not an anti-vax, you're not, you just for the choice, right? I mean, am I right in in that?
Oh, a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, I am pro-choice, prima choice, like you need to decide what's right for you, your body and your family, right?
Right.
You make that decision. It's up to you. We we should not mandate that. And I think that we should look at the data on things, right? Because you look at like the MMR vaccine that kids have to get, but that came two years ago to the council, maybe three. And the Health Department asked us to support a letter to the state and the state legislation that would require the MMR and remove the or make at least the religious exemptions more stringent and a couple of others, right? They and I I fought against that at the time because the data actually says on that, that when it comes to measles, there are way more people that end up in the hospital or with side effects or sometimes lifelong side effects from the vaccine than the number of people that catch it nationwide every year.
Right.
Right? The and the outbreak that actually occurred and that they wanted to point to requiring it. I found out later that that outbreak started from a child who got the vaccine and the vaccine caused the outbreak. It caused him to get measles that he spread. Which isn't abnormal because it's the same issue with polio. Like, polio would have been gone, right? Completely taken care of now. I mean, Rotary is done, Rotary International phenomenal job with that. The number one cause of polio today is the polio vaccine. That that's what is literally causing the spread of it.
Right.
So why would we force people to do these kind of things, like if they don't feel it's right for them?
Right.
Or if the data suggests that it might be more harmful for them to do so, like, that doesn't make sense to me.
Right, and it it just seems like, you know, it's for the sake of the public health and safety. They're so worried about health and safety. I would beg that they're not so worried about the safety because if you go to Bellingham, it's not safe, right? I mean, of course, there are places in the US that are way worse. But Bellingham ten years ago is nothing like Bellingham today.
Yeah.
And so I don't think they're so concerned about the safety. And I don't know if they're really concerned about the health either because our our hospital is not the best. It is not. And I know that from personal experience.
So do I.
I will not, if I had to go to the ER today and I could drive down south, I would go first.
Yeah.
Because it's bad. And and so I I'm like, where is the health department? They're they're in the schools, they're they're making sure that people can and can't do this and that and testing this. And and, you know, now we want your kids to, we want you to sign this off so we can test your kids all the time. Where are they? They haven't come to the council since July.
Yep.
Again, pandemic, no health department report.
The county staff knows this, and you will hear them do this all the time in our meetings. What is the will of the council majority? Because they know, like, it doesn't matter what I say or what Kathy says or Ben or Barbara Brenner said.
Right.
All that matters is what's the four? What do the four majority want? And that's the direction they're gonna go. And you're right, it's not about health and safety. I mean, they they freaked out last year because Linden had a car parade in which people were gonna be in their own cars, driving down Front Street, right? And yet, a week later or a week before, they allowed ten, like, thousands of people in downtown Bellingham next to each other, most of which were wearing masks, some of them were not. But that was okay. There was to be shoulder to shoulder, wearing a mask, but we couldn't be in our own cars driving down Main Street.
Right.
It it's crazy.
It it is crazy. And and it, and then again, their Linden's being attacked all the time because they do this whole case rate thing. Like, if you take the actual numbers of cases, Bellingham has far more.
Yeah.
But we want to say this, case rate, they're they're manipulating us.
You know, the other thing about that is they don't tell you where people actually got COVID.
Right.
Right? Where did you come in contact with? What person, what location, what?
Right.
How many people that live in Linden commute into Bellingham for work? Or groceries or dinner out or any number of things, right?
Right, well, now, and like, I, we've interviewed Gary Viss um, from the Linden Chamber and, you know, Linden is testing the poop. Which I've asked Erica Lockenbach what the heck is up with that? And she said, well, we don't follow it and we don't care and nobody else seems to be doing it. But Linden thought it'd be this fun thing to do with their COVID dollars. Well, they're they don't have anymore to spend on that, so now they're spending the city's dollars. And I live in Linden, so stop testing the poop because it's a waste of money. Because the thing is, it's not an isolated experiment, right? We don't know who's coming from where and and adding to the the system here, right? So you can't, it's nothing. It's 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 no, you can't, that's not science. It's crap. Literally.
I have no idea what they're
So, yeah, so it's just, it's just insanity, right? And we just keep doing it and doing it and doing it. And and so, I mean, I guess kind of, that was kind of a rabbit trail. But I just, that that kind of just shows you like, why, why are we spending money doing things? And I wonder, if you follow the money back, the um, Health Department got a ton of money for advertising about COVID. A ton. The money stopped. And it was like, where did the WAC Unified Command website go? Like, all of a sudden, we get no information. It's either coercion or no information.
Yeah.
If you're on
We haven't gotten information since the beginning. They they've kept like a stranglehold on that since day one. And they ran everything through Unified Command. Because that way the Health Department and the mayor and the executive were able to step back there and make decisions that were not public. And then they could blame it on this like anonymous third party versus taking responsibility for it. I mean, Unified Command, they got rid of and closed that facility down. And then the volunteers went home. Last year, like months and months and months and months ago, right? And yet somehow like Unified Command, as far as the county is concerned, the Health Department just stopped in July?
Right.
Right, no, that, it's been the Health Department the entire time.
It has been.
Making the decisions with the executive the entire time. They just didn't want to take responsibility for it.
Right, and so I guess now it's, I feel like it's time and we need to hold them accountable because we're stuck in this situation that's getting worse without any accountability. And I don't know where Sat Pol's spending the money on everything either. That's a whole nother disaster we could probably do like a series on.
Yeah.
Maybe we should. But I guess, you know, it, so if you're reelected and you get majority, what do you think the most important thing to work on immediately would be?
Yeah, you know, okay, housing is gonna be a big issue, right? The, I think fixing the billing codes helps us there, basically create more housing stock. And it it really just comes down to supply and demand right now. There is such small amounts of of demand or supply, very few houses for sale on the market and apartments available for rent that compared to the population moving here, we just don't have enough, right? That's what really is driving the cost up, especially when you have these cash buyers coming from Seattle or from California that are literally writing checks for a million or two million dollars to buy homes here. Two years ago, we're nine hundred thousand or eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, and our property taxes, I mean, my mine came in the mail, is value up eighty thousand again this year? Yeah. And our property taxes, I mean, my, mine came in the mail. Value up eighty thousand again this year?
You know, the funny thing is go look at Bellingham. Todd Donovan was bragging about how his value went down by sixty grand.
Oh, great. So let's live in Linden so you can pay Todd Donovan's bill.
Kind of interesting how that started happening after the Democrats elected someone to.
Be the assessor.
Yeah, right? The, uh, very strange there, right? Maybe, maybe not.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so that, that's a huge issue. But here's the other thing that I, I'm actually even more concerned about right now. Our local economy. We're right on like, right around five percent unemployment. And that's down from like the seventeen and a half that we hit, um, after COVID started last year, right? We're projecting essentially another twenty percent of people losing their jobs due to these mandates. And so you're thinking like, okay, we very likely could end up at twenty-five percent unemployment here in Waukesha County, which
Can you collect unemployment if you get, if you lose your job because of the mandate?
I don't know.
Cause I don't think you can.
Right? So you have people, twenty-five percent of our community with zero income. They, like, how do they pay their mortgages? How do they pay any of their bills? They, they certainly can't buy things. The, uh, our economy is just gonna take a huge tank.
Yeah.
Right? And that affects everybody at the end of the day. Like small business owners, they're gonna have to lay people off. You know, over here's a motorcycle dealership. The, uh, I went in there to look at buying a motorcycle here two, three months ago. They had one on the floor and they told me, like, one model, one motorcycle for all the models that they sell. And they wouldn't be able to get another one for three to six months if I ordered it. Like, how does that small business stay in business if it doesn't have product to sell? Yeah, so where do we end up as a county if we end up going to twenty-five percent unemployment? I mean, you're talking Great Depression. I mean, that's.
Yeah, and the refineries are about to get hit next. Um, because the mandates, it looks like, are gonna hit the refineries. And if, and if, I mean, we, the refiners are already at risk. I know it's kind of not an issue as much right now, but I mean, Alcoa is gone. And now some of those people who are at Alcoa, I know they were at Lister Chain Forge.
Yeah.
They just got mandated. So now they're gonna lose their jobs again.
Yeah. That's insane.
Yeah.
It, it's completely insane. And they, they, how's it possible that these people aren't looking down the road to actually understand the consequences of these decisions?
Right.
Do they just, are they?
It doesn't feel like it's about.
Smart enough? I don't understand, right? Like, how do you not see what that actually means and yeah, the future that that brings us in our community?
Right. And, and if we lose everything out at Cherry Point, I don't know what, I mean, that's, that'll be the death of Waukesha County just about with.
I mean, Cherry Point is just a small fraction of it though, right? I mean, Zodiac.
Right?
Zodiac was like, three, four hundred people? And he, that's like a airline engineering firm.
Right.
Tell me that those people aren't all making a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand a year plus. Those got, gone, right? Um, there was a, a health software company here, a, a couple of years ago that is closed up and, and totally moved their operations out. And all the same, right? A hundred thousand dollar plus jobs.
And I've heard of some really big ones that are thinking of moving.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, uh, and when you look at and you talk to employers that want to move here for one reason or another, they're not because they can't come here because there's no housing for their people. So not only are we losing these jobs, but we can't bring new jobs into the area either.
Right. Right. Yeah, it's a dark, it's a dark tunnel we're headed down if we don't change things.
Yep.
So I guess, you know, our, our message today is really like Tyler Bird and, and, and vote. And I mean, we, it, it's, it's a serious thing. And I guess for me, I'm trying to raise the, or just hit the bell. Like we, you, you vote in presidential elections, most people, right? We had, what was a hundred and, how, how, I mean, seventy-six percent turnout, I think. Was that about, right?
No, I think it was higher.
Higher than that?
Yeah.
Huge, huge turnout last election. And then most people don't, don't vote the other three years.
Yeah. Well, and the year after a presidential is historically the lowest, right? And so you're in like high twenties, low thirties as far as percentage turnout. So really what that means is like, that's your chance to make the biggest impact.
It, it is. And, and I, I would, I would beg people who have never voted to pick your ballot up and vote this time. Because we need to turn it around, but we need people who have never voted. There's so many people are out there complaining right now. You complain all you want, but if you don't vote, in my opinion, you have no right to complain.
Yeah.
Because you didn't help. And if you just did that one thing, the only thing you did to help was vote, it could, it could totally change your life because local elections are what affect us every day.
I ask people this all the time. Really, my big thing is my kids, right? And I think most parents are the same way. You're really looking down the road and saying, how do I leave my kids in a better place than where I am in life, right? Or where I started and where I left? The, uh, and so you, you're doing everything possible to set them up and, and to give them a better life. If that means taking like, like what's that worth to you, right? A place for your kids that affordably buy a house here in Waukesha County, to actually be able to live here in the county where you live. Like what's that worth to you?
Right.
Is it worth five minutes of filling out a ballot and dropping it off? Is it worth donating a hundred dollars to someone's campaign today? Is it worth calling up a friend and asking him to vote and turning in the ballot?
Yeah, you'll spend all day complaining on social media about what's going on. Can you not spend five minutes filling out a ballot, five minutes telling fifty people to also do it?
Cause it's not just, can your kid afford to buy a house here? It's, can your kid get a good paying job here?
Right.
Can your kid get a good education here? Yeah, is there a good criminal justice system here? Everything is impacted by that.
Right.
So, yeah, what's it worth?
Right. That's a good point. So.
To me, it's worth my entire investment, right? I mean, like my entire savings, like that's gonna go to them anyway.
Right. Well, and I think we, we as parents, we build, we try to build a future for our children. We try to keep them safe and do what's best for them. And so can you ask yourself right now, and a lot of people, you know, they just want to move. They just want to leave. And that's their choice and that's fine. Um.
Just vote before you do.
Yeah, do that. But the thing is it'll follow you. You might just buy yourself time.
Yeah.
So I think it's super important to remember, are we leaving our kids with a community, a country where they have the right to continue to choose? Or are we throwing the towel in right now and just saying, well, I'm not gonna do that because it's probably fraudulent? What do you have to lose if you think it's fraudulent? Just vote. Just vote.
Yeah, for clarity, we're not asking them to do fraudulent things.
No, we're not. We're not.
Like, yeah, they'll commit fraud and change my ballot. And so it's not worth voting because someone will fraudulently.
Yeah.
Yeah, alter my ballot, which I agree with you a hundred percent. Yeah, it's, the odds are in our favor. If you vote, the, the odds are by far that your ballot's gonna go through the way it is.
Yeah, especially here in our county. I can tell you, I have observed a lot within our auditor's office. And, um, our current auditor runs a pretty tight ship. And if you ever have questions, you go to her, she will respond. She will get back to you. She will sit with you. She will talk with you. She's great. And, you know, her and I don't see eye to eye on everything politically, but we don't have to because this is America.
Yeah.
Where we can, we can, you know, get the job done. And I, and I think, again, though, if you don't like the laws and the stuff that's going on with voting, it's because they've been made laws. And the only way to fix that is by voting.
Exactly.
Because that's legislation.
And if you don't vote, then you're just conceding to a loss.
You are, you are. And so I think there's a lot of people who are pushing back and they're doing a lot of things. They're speaking at council meetings. They're, you know, protesting, they're doing so many different things, writing letters. But really what it comes down to is you have to vote. It's your civic duty.
Uh, and take all that energy, instead of writing a letter to the council this year, that, that isn't gonna change anything. How about you write a letter to the editor of the newspaper about the candidate that should get in there that, that can change things?
Right.
It is, people can vote for me, but if it's just me getting re-elected, it's not gonna change. Yeah, I continue shining the light and calling them out and they hate that.
Right. Cause you, you sat there by yourself without Ben and Kathy for a while.
Yeah, two years, right?
Yeah. And, and, and so, yes, we've gotta, we've gotta change the tide. We've gotta start in our school boards and.
We need to elect, we need to elect Kamal instead of Barry. Barry's had his, his, his chance, right? His thirty, his forty-three years to, to make change. We, we've seen what his change has made.
Right.
Let's elect Kamal and see what he can do.
Right.
They, uh, Todd, Todd's had plenty of time since he got elected and even more time before that. The, uh, as well, working in the shadows like he does. But the, let's see what Nurse Nancy does. Let's see what someone else has to say.
Yeah, maybe a medical professional in the time where we might need some medical advice.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think Tyler, if people want to reach you, they want to donate to you, they want to talk to you, how do they find you?
Uh, website is the easiest. All the contact information is there. There's a number of ways on there to help out with the campaign if you want to. You can donate on the website. He's got my email as well as the, the phone number. Um, and that's just TylerBird.com. So T Y L E R B Y R D dot com.
Dot com. Okay. And then you also, um, got this effort to try and find voters who aren't normally voting. But, and we're doing like a text a day challenge, right?
Yeah.
So, so what is that? What do they text? They text Waukesha, right?
Yep.
To what number?
So you text the word Waukesha to the number. So like you enter the phone number, five, five, four, four, four. So two fives, three fours, five, five, four, four, four. You put that in where the phone number goes and then you text in the message area, the word Waukesha. And you'll get an instant reply to that. The, and that's how you know you did it right. But you get one message a day. We're only sending one message a day. Now, I, I should clarify, because a couple of people reached out and like, hey, you sent other messages and I went off the list. We only send one message a day. There are other groups that are sending messages out there. I don't know how they got your phone number or anything else. We will only send you one message a day. Um, and it's just something small that you can do to actually help win, right? And so for instance, we send them to a site where they could put in their information and have a campaign sign delivered to them. So they don't have to go show up and, and go get it, right? And that way they could put a campaign sign out front and show people, help us spread the word and create awareness. Or we sent a page out where they could see the candidates and, and like the candidates' Facebook pages to help create a following and awareness for the candidates that they're, they're supporting. So the, it's just small stuff like that that they can do in a couple of minutes each day that really will help us spread the word and create awareness for the people that we need to get elected.
Right. And, and again, like that goes back to what can you do as a person and you're busy or maybe you're a homeschool parent now. I never thought you were gonna be. So just vote and you can do this texting once a day, do something and you can be a part of the change.
Yep.
So, yeah, all right. So TylerBird.com to get ahold of you. Is there anything else you want to say?
Yeah, please elect, please elect Kamal and Nancy. Please vote for them because we really, things could be so much different. So just spend the five minutes and help us out.
Right. So Kamal, everybody in the county can vote for Kamal and Nancy is District Two. So if you see Todd Donovan on your ballot, go right below that to the right and fill in the bubble and write Nurse Nancy, Nurse Nancy Hill, Nancy Hill, any of that will be counted. Um, cause that's voter intent for Nurse Nancy. So yes, if you see Todd on your ballot, go right below and.
Take a picture of that.
Yeah.
Post it on social media. So everyone else knows who you're supporting too. Because there's two reasons people don't vote in, in this election. One, they don't know the candidates and so they skip it and let someone else vote that they think knows better.
Right.
And two, because they forget their ballot on the counter at home and it doesn't get turned in by the deadline.
Yeah. It's the white envelope with the pink on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's that one. Looks important. Just fill it out and.
So you can fix the, both of those issues. If you take a picture of your ballot, your recommendation and how you're voting goes a long ways. And it also helps to remind that person to get their ballot in.
Right. Go make a TikTok. Do something. Yeah. Just go vote. All right. Thank you, Tyler. Thanks for coming on.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.